Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come.
Thy will be done.
On earth as it is in heaven, give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We'll start with item D, the approval of minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved from the September 3, 2024 Regular Council meeting. All right, I'm hearing none. Those will stand approved. Item E, Citizen Communication, if anyone would like to address council, feel free to come forward and do so at this time. Item F, Reports from Council Committees. F1, The Electric Committee did not meet on September 9, 2024 due to lack of agenda items. F2, The Water, Sewer, Refuge, Recycling, and Liter Committee did meet on September 9, 2024. Mr. Hayes?
And unanimously agreed to pass on to council to not increase the water rate.
Thank you, sir. F3, The Municipal Properties Building Land Use and Economic Development Committee did not meet on September 9, 2024 due to lack of agenda items. And F4, The Parks and Recreation Committee did not meet earlier tonight due to lack of agenda items. There are no new ordinances this evening. There are also no second reading of ordinances and resolutions this evening. We will move to item J, Third Reading of Ordinances and Resolutions. Ordinance number 030-24, An Ordinance Providing Consent to the Director of Transportation to Complete the Resurfacing of Sections of State Route 108 in the City of Napoleon.
Motion?
Second.
Thank you. Andy?
Yes, Council President, one final time. This is legislation provided by and required by ODOT in order for them to work within our municipality. There are no changes to the legislation.
Any questions or comments from council? I am hearing none. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
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 All right, that will pass on Third Read. Item J2, Resolution Number 031-24, A Resolution Authorizing the Adoption and Approval of the Henry County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Andy?
Yes, this was the plan that was developed through the EMA with input from all the municipalities within the county. And to speak to a concern that was brought up in previous discussions on this item. I did, we did have the 2025, I'm sorry, we did have the early warning sirens presented to us last year prior to coming to council with the budget. And I did get those numbers, and we will have it for review this year by full council.
Thank you.
Yeah, there are no other changes to the legislation.
Any questions or comments? I'm hearing none. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
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 All right, that will also pass on Third Read. We'll move to Good of the City. K1, Discussion or Action, Approval of the Power Supply Cost Adjustment Factor for September 2024, SPSCA Three Month Average Factor 0.00453 and JV2 0.075024. Andy?
Yes, Council President, at some point I will stop saying this is lower than it was the previous month, but this is actually the lowest power supply cost adjustment factor since 2016. We attribute it to the hydros being offline for a large amount of the month. Better than 31% of the time, they were, there was low water, so they could not operate. Hydro power is clean, but it's very expensive. So we had to go to another source, and that other source was Fremont, which is a gas-fired plant. And as you may be aware, natural gas is very inexpensive right now. So it has driven down our costs dramatically. So. So it was a good month.
Thank you, Andy. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Item K2, Discussion or Action to Accept a $15 Donation to the Napoleon Police Department for Ballistic Vest.
Yeah, Chief, would you like to speak to this? Mrs. Martinez apparently made this donation to the PD.
Uh, yes. Mrs. Martinez stopped by our office. She had been giving a donation to a telemarketer on behalf of a, that had been calling her annually to make a donation. And a family member had spoken to her saying, "It would be better for you to know where your money's going." So she stopped by our office one day and just wanted to give us that donation instead of it going someplace she didn't know where it was gonna go. She wanted to know where it was gonna go. So she graciously stopped by and gave that donation to us. I've already sent her a letter appreciating her time to come by and give that to us, and appreciated herself.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks to you. Is there a motion to accept? So moved. Second. Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Okay, that has been accepted, and thank you again to Ms. Martinez. Appreciate the donation there. Item K3, Discussion or Action, Third Quarter Budget Adjustments. Kevin, can I give them to you?
Certainly. Thank you, Council President. This is our quarterly request for the Direct Law Director to draft appropriate legislation. The Finance and Budget Committee will meet on September 23. What, do you know the time?
Six o'clock.
At six o'clock.
Pending Jill's approval.
And so at least it'll be on the 23rd, and after that disallows the Law Director to enact legislation following the meeting, to come to you the next council meeting.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to direct the Law Director?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
All right. Item K4, Discussion or Action. The Healthcare Cost Committee recommends to council to keep wellness as is. Andy?
Yes, Council President, these next two items do not require specific legislation, but we just want to inform council that the Healthcare Cost Committee did meet about a week and a half ago and voted to keep the wellness exam, or I'm sorry, keep the wellness incentive as is. The wellness incentive is an exam that is required of each participant in the plan. If it's a single, then it's just a single has to have a wellness exam. If it's a couple, then the husband and wife or spouse both have to have the wellness exam. If they choose to forego those exams, there is a $50 a month surcharge to those individuals that choose to not take part in the wellness incentive or wellness plan. Last year, I believe, we had two, Britney, is that correct? Did I miss anything, Britney? Okay, thanks.
If they have the family on the plan, it's still just husband and spouse?
That's correct. It's just a spouse.
Completely a spouse.
That's correct. Completely a spouse.
Good deal. And no action required from council?
I don't believe so.
Good. Any questions or comments? All right, we'll move to item K5, Discussion or Action. The Healthcare Cost Committee recommends accepting the proposed healthcare plans for 2025.
Yes, Council President, these, this year we are making a switch from Aetna to MedMutual. The Aetna plans were increasing year-over-year 15.4%. And MedMutual is providing identical plans to our employees for an increase of either 4.1% up to 8.1%, depending on which plan the employee chooses. So it's a much, much more palatable increase. And the coverage, as I stated, is identical. For the dental and vision, we will switch as well, and that will go to Delta Dental and Delta Vision. No cost increase there, and it provides a greater, a greater provider network as well.
Okay. And again, no action from council on this one?
That's correct.
All right. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Item K6, Discussion or Action to Accept a $1,087.95 donation from the Napoleon Elks Lodge, number 929, to the Parks and Recreation Department for equipment for youth baseball and softball programs.
Yes, this is a donation the Elks has made in years past as well, and we're very grateful for their generosity. And I, quite frankly, I don't know that it'll be the last one they make. So they've been very generous to our programs, and this is just the latest donation they've made. So we appreciate it very much. I just ask for council's approval to accept that donation.
Is there a motion to accept?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
That has been accepted, and again, thank you to the Napoleon Elks Lodge for the donation. Item K7, Discussion or Action to Approve PC 2406 for Request for Amend Parcel Number 411192120040, 14, excuse me, 411193610080, and finally, 411193610020.
Can you say that? I didn't quite.
And that's because I couldn't find one or two more parcels to change. Yes, Council President, these parcels are being adjusted. We had a, we had an industrial parcel out on Scott Street where the Farmers and Merchant State Bank is. And that is a carryover, I believe, from the, some of you remember Foster scanning out there. And I just don't think that was ever cleaned up. There is also some C5 highway commercial along there, which I wanted to consolidate all of the C5s out west of Oakwood Avenue toward Truck Stop. And it, it was only natural that those went to a C4. So it just basically makes that entire corridor now on Scott Street a C4, which is a commercial district as well, so, general commercial.
I just need a motion for approval on this, correct, Andy?
Uh, yeah, I believe so. It was approved by the Planning Commission. I believe all you'd have to do is approve it.
Okay. Is there a motion for that approval?
Motion.
Second. Thank you. Questions or comments? Okay. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
All right, that has been approved. Item K8, Discussion or Action to Approve PC 2407 for Request for Amendment Parcel 411300500000, and 410094522140. Andy?
Yes, Council President, again, this is basically a cleanup and also at the request of a property owner. We had some industrial from over on Oakwood Avenue where Gurkin has his, his business that crept down along the creek and back toward Scott Street. We cleaned that up. We made that C4, as well as a couple of parcels became residential as well at the request of the resident, or the property owner.
Is that on, up by Jaeger Street on Red?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I'm sorry, Andy, say again, so the property that is in question, I know where it's at, like from Rye to Gurkin's?
Right.
It's, it's gonna be, it's going?
That'll be residential.
Gotcha.
It was industrial.
I gotcha.
Where John Gurkin has his business on Oakwood, that's industrial. But it kind of, that industrial kind of crept back behind into that area. So the property owners back there had requested it become residential. And then, and then it would have completely cut off a section of industrial that would have been remaining. So we just melted that industrial into the C4 that was already there. Just kind of cleans it all up.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Okay, that has been approved. Item K9, Discussion or Action to Approve PC 2408 for Conditional Use Permit on 123 West Front Street. Andy, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, as you may have noticed, they tore down the, the self-serve car wash on Front Street, and they want to, and they also took out the vacuums that were there. And they want to put in new vacuums, but they wanted to put them much closer to the street than what they were. And we allowed them to put them in, but they're gonna be at least 15 feet off of where the new pathway will be. New walkway along Front Street.
And what did they request? What were they originally requesting?
Uh, they really weren't. They weren't sure how close they could be. So they had to, because they wanted to be close, they had to bring it to the Planning Commission. They really weren't sure where they, they could put them.
That worked for them?
Yep, it did. Yep, they were very happy with the resolution.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
That has also been approved. Item K10, Discussion or Action. Water, Sewer, Refuge, Recycling, and Liter Committee recommends to council to not increase the water rate in 2025. Andy?
Yes, Council President, I thought the meeting went well the other night. I started with a little bit of a historical perspective on the whole water rate thing. Back in 1999, we came under findings and orders with the EPA to clean up our sewer infrastructure, basically. It was a 20-year plan at the time, was supposed to cost $35 million. To date, it's closer to $100 million than what we spent. Over the course of the last 25 years, we've had nothing but rate increases for our ratepayers and residents. And so I took a good, hard look at it this year, comparing our, our funds. I looked at our funds. Our funds are healthy. I compared our funds to those of 10 different municipalities of similar size. And relative to all 10 of those, our funds are very healthy. In addition to that, I looked, or I asked Chad to put off a project that we had planned for next year just to help preserve the health of those funds for another year. And we're at the point now where we, we can have, we can pick and choose what projects we do. I call them discretionary projects. We have the East Washington Street Project next year that we will be tackling, and that's really one of the last parts of this whole long-term control plan to clean up the system. And that, that will be an expensive project. We've planned for it. And then, so that will be completed next year, and then the following year or two years following, we will complete the, the rest of that length, basically from Hawks Pizza to Perry Street downtown. So we're at the point where we can pick and choose what we do. And so I thought it's a good time to give our ratepayers some relief. And so I asked the Board of Public Affairs and the Water Sewer Committee to approve no increase for next year, and they agreed. Did I miss anything, Commissioner or Councilman?
No. I was just thinking back to when this first started. I was working construction at that time, and I believe it was in the winter of '59 and '60 that we were, we did the first separation of storm and water in the west end of town. And we finished that job at $134,000. That was six square blocks of that area. You can't even get the equipment out there for that now.
That's right.
It was asked in, in committee when the last time we had a 0% increase on these rates. Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, it was 2011?
Well, we could find, it goes back to 2011. And then there was, like, I believe in 2012, there was a mid-year increase that, that was sort of like an emergency at the time. But I'm not exactly sure what all went on, but yeah, it goes clear back to 20 years ago.
Okay, one thing I didn't add, and I should have, is, and we don't, we don't want to get to the point where, oh, shoot, you know, we gotta increase them 10% again. And, and I, I'm very confident we won't have to do that. Another piece of the puzzle that we're, is still somewhat of an unknown is the wastewater that we will be accepting from Campbell's. That will be a nice revenue source for our sewer funds as well. So I think things are looking good. And we'll see, we'll take another good, hard look at it next year and decide on what route we want to go, whether we want to pay for an official study, which is back in 20, 2020. We paid $20,000 for the study, so I gotta leave, that's increased in price. We can either go that route, or I have some other thoughts too in terms of building in increases. So, but for this year, I just thought we could go by with, don't increase at all.
Yeah, I, I know it had to be a lot of work to, to review everything internally. So thank you for all the work that Kevin and Andy did on that front. If we have to cross the bridge of doing a study down the road, it is what it is. But it was nice to save that $20,000 this year, so thank you guys again.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Are we just looking for approval from council on this?
I don't know that.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Could we have that motion, please?
Motion.
Second. Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
That has been approved. Item K11, Discussion or Action. Direct the Law Director to Draft the Necessary Legislation to Allow the City Manager to Enter Into a Recycling Contract with Werler Incorporated. Andy?
Yes, Council President, last Thursday, Brian, Chad, and I met with representatives from Werler, and they presented us with a price of $50 a ton, this tipping fee. We're currently paying $45 a ton. The three of us felt like that was, that was more than fair. The last time we negotiated a price was 2017, at $45 a ton. If you apply the rate of inflation to that, shouldn't say it too loud because Werlers might hear, but it would be over $57. So we thought $50 was more than fair for the new price. So I just asked for council's recommendation, or approval for me to enter into a contract and draft the necessary legislation for that.
Hey, Andy, it was, I don't know if you recall with the contract, is there any CPI increase annually, or is it just three?
No, straight, yeah, and this will be a three-year contract. Just a straight $50 for three years.
Great.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Just, just a comment. As Britton, I know we had that discussion. We probably will be asking the, the Water Refuge Committee later on, maybe a year in to look at it, because I see through our numbers. We are running probably about, now we're through August, about 25,000, you know, our expenditures versus revenue, coming up short. But then again, I don't know what the last four months do because we have, you know, refuge, special pickup, you know, in October, et cetera. But it'll be something I think, you know, as we get into the later months, that we'll take a close look and hopefully visit again, as we all agreed, I think, you know, last vote we had.
Yeah, and I, I think the rates took effect, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, May 1st?
Yes.
The new rates?
Yes.
So, so we've got four and a half months of new rates. And so hopefully over the next eight months, we'll see, we'll have a better picture of where, where we are with the rate increases.
When does the revenue with bag tags come in? Is that, is that monthly, or do we get?
We, we get that as we, as they get sold. So when an entity like Circle K, they will purchase, you know, 200 at a time. And so that, we get that revenue as we hand those to them with that. So they just purchase them at $4 now instead of 2. So they front the cost to us, and then we pay that in. How often we refill them is at their request. So sometimes it's monthly, sometimes it can go a couple months.
We are like 9,000 better year-over-year month-to-month. This year versus last year, same doing, same period. It's an improvement, but maybe not as great as we wanted. We'll see.
What, what I could also tell you is, is that the change of the special pickups has certainly helped too. Because there was a time that this, in lieu of bag tags, people were paying much less to do a special pickup. And so why buy a bag tag when I could do a special pickup for eight bucks? Or whatever it was.
It was 563, I believe, before, and now it's $15 if you want a special. Starts at $15 and goes up from there. Yeah, so.
Lastly, I do appreciate the city employee out at the yard waste as well, checking. I know I pulled in, he stopped me, wanted a similar license, and yeah, I'm kind of aware of that.
Yeah.
But he was very cordial, and it's good that we're checking, doing audits, a little bit of what, what's going on.
Yeah, we're doing that as we can, as we have some folks that are freed up. We did, we did have a situation where somebody was basically on leave, or should have been on leave, but we were able to find him that job to do for a while, so. But as we have people free up, it, it certainly helps to have them out there. I had a guy come in when I was leaving for lunch today. Some gentleman asked me on his way in, he says, "Where do I buy a pass for the yard waste site?" So they're still buying them. So it's, it's working.
Just to mention, Andy, in your memo, you said that this increase would be approximately $2,000 annually?
Yes, yes, based on the, our average tonnage, it's about $2,000. Yeah, we average right around 400 tons.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to direct the Law Director?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. We'll go around the table. Kevin, I'll start on your side this evening.
I have nothing, thank you.
Tom? Britney?
Andy, sorry, I was gonna put Tony on the spot, but he's not here tonight. Have you heard any update on the softball baseball field, Glenwood? That there's any improvement, getting anything done?
No, as a matter of fact, I had them go and board up from the inside the last remaining open space. I went by there a couple of weeks ago. I went by there a couple of weeks ago, my wife noticed that the scoreboard was on. And so I stopped, called Tony from there, contacted Tony from there, and he came out and shut it down, and I said, we've gotta get this boarded up. So they did get it boarded up. We're at the mercy of the contractor that has promised us they would do it. And hopefully their, their busy season will be wrapping up soon, and they can get back on that. But I have heard nothing, wasn't I?
Okay. That's helpful, I know. Appreciate it.
Mr. Hayes?
I have nothing.
Mr. White, nothing? Nothing for me? Billy? Nothing for me, thank you. Andy?
Yes, I do, we did receive a check late today for another grant, and I'm gonna ask for council's approval on that, and I will pass it back to Chief and see if he wants to speak to this. This is for body armor.
As some of you may, or may not, remember, about a year and a half ago, two years ago, we had bought rifle plates for the officers who wear from a company that ended up utilizing substandard materials. Federal government came in and said, they're using foreign-made, substandard materials, they're unsafe to use. So, federal government is taking care of that end of things, sure that would be a long-term issue, but we as a city went ahead and replaced those with, and I'm sure Chief White will remember a company by the name of Point Blank. They have been a body armor manufacturer for dozens and dozens of years. We went with them to replace those with. We got funds to go ahead and pay for those upfront, so they are a good solid, actually the best on the market. And we applied for the Bureau of Workmen's Comp grant to pay, repay for seventy-five percent of the cost of that. So today, we received a check on, for the grant to, say twenty-two thousand?
Eight, eight hundred and ninety dollars and forty-eight cents.
And forty-eight cents. To pay for seventy-five percent of the cost of those rifle plates, so.
Thank you, Chief. I would just ask for council's approval of acceptance of that grant.
Okay. Perfect. Is there a motion to accept? So moved.
A second.
Mikayla, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Andy.
Next thing is, the CIC annual meeting is coming up. That is Thursday, October twenty-fourth. It's held out at Leisure Time Winery's, at Leisure Time Winery. Goes from four-thirty to seven, and if any of you are interested in attending that, let me know, and I will certainly make your reservations. Finally, Efficiency Smart, Billy, I'm sorry, Joey Boston will be here next meeting, next council meeting, to give her, basically, her annual update. And that's all I have.
I will just call a brief executive session for compensation of personnel. If we could have a motion to go into executive session, please?
So moved.
Second. Mikayla, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
We'll start with just council. Relative. All right, so we have a motion to come out of executive session for compensation of personnel.
Motion.
Second. Thank you. Mikayla, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Okay. No action taken. I will make a motion to adjust the membership of the current standing ad hoc committee. I would like to appoint Tom Weaver, Brittany Schwab, Robert Whiteall, and Brittany Ruth to that committee. Brittany, are you okay with that?
And just for clarification, this is the ad hoc committee doing?
Reviewing employee compensation and job duties.
Okay.
All right, is there a second? Second. Mikayla, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
That has been approved. I will allow the ad hoc committee to schedule when those meetings will take place, so we'll go from there. We'll move to item M, approve payment of bills and financial reports. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the payment of bills shall stand approved. I'm hearing none, they'll stand approved. And is there a motion? Yes. I'm gonna have one mulligan on the, around the table, I apologize, thank you for the reminder, Brittany. Tom, do you want to address the, the light on?
Yeah, just to, I know Mayor Byerlik, he brought up the point on doing speed, potentially checking the speed limit on, I'll call it the old river road. The other point I wanted to make is the flashing lights we have, to make sure we know what we're supposed to do as citizens, and I'm gonna look at Jen, because I think it's something there's an awareness there. It's my understanding that when someone is at that light and pushes the light, that I am to yield as a driver of my car and to stop. And it worries me, I've done that, thinking that's what I should do. Two young ladies pushed the light, I stopped. My biggest concern is, do people understand that, coming the other way, but especially coming behind me, that I've stopped there? I was scared, I looked in my mirror the whole time, worried about that. So I, I think that, I want to ask that that somehow be incorporated into the study, and that people understand, if that is the law, which it's my assumption it is.
People in the crosswalk are required to have a right of way all the time. That has never changed from the time any of you ever got a driver's license.
But I, but I, and I, I agree, and I know that, but I'm not sure the motor, or the public knows that. I agree with you too.
So I'm asking for, we do a good job as city council, somehow asking between our media and our law enforcement, that people understand this is what you should do. So that someone doesn't fly through it when I've pushed the button, thought I could pass, because two people stopped, now one doesn't, but also that somebody coming behind me understands that I've stopped, I've stopped where they're starting to rev up to fifty.
Yeah.
And Jen has done a great job, and the Signal's always done a great job of helping us out with, with stuff like this. And that's really the best place to, to do it. You know, we can only do so much here. People, you can see, most of these residents that have attended tonight will probably figure that out, but unfortunately, that doesn't work around here. But I, I will do what I can to work with Jen, to see if she's interested.
Yeah, if she would, I just, if I didn't bring it up, I would feel, obviously, I would feel really bad if there was an accident and I knew I should've done something.
You know, I, I go up north Michigan a lot, and there's several smaller communities up there, resort, resort communities that I like to go to, and in almost every single one, they've got little things, again, they're smaller communities, so they can do this, but they have little things there, you know? Motoring traffic basically has to yield to pedestrians. And they, they know it up there, they do it much better up there. But you have a situation out here on Riverview where it's, it's forty miles an hour at the park out there.
And it hits fifty right four miles. It, it's fifty right four miles.
It's fifty, yeah, I'm talking about where the flashing beacon is, but it is fifty, yeah, not long before that, it's fifty miles an hour, so people are still coming down from that fifty. It's just too fast.
Yeah.
So, I have, Chad's looking into the cost of a study to go from basically the western cit, corp limits out to the hospital. And we'll see what we can do there in terms of controlling the speed a little better.
So, I kinda just threw it across the table, but you know, if you can.
It's all right.
Not a table. But I, I just really think we need to make sure people understand why we have flashing lights. We spent the money, grant money to do it years ago.
Yeah, yeah, the, the motoring public always has to yield to pedestrians in a crosswalk. Now, if they're in the middle of the street, all bets are off. Go for them. Just kidding. No, in all seriousness, in all seriousness, when they're in the crosswalk, the motoring public has to yield to them.
And the great part is, people are using those walks. As I come to town, three times a day maybe, and Brittany would as well, anybody that lives out there, there's a lot of traffic out there now, and you see people using, you know, the crosswalk, you're seeing people, because we have the sidewalks, it's all nice.
Yeah.
You know, coming all the way downtown. But we need to make, I just don't want a tragic accident because somebody pushed that, and it was flashing, and they thought they had a right of way, and, but somebody's not used to stopping there, and didn't.
Yeah, and we can, we can utilize our social media channels as well, so.
And I think what the chief was trying to say also was that if they didn't push the button, and they're walking in their crosswalk, it, they still have to stop.
Great point. Yeah.
Your present driver's education instructors don't touch that subject at all.
So I'm sorry, I kinda speilavered the meeting, but.
That's fine.
Council President, if I could just follow up.
Yes, sir.
Same line of thinking. I know there's been some feedback on bike safety. Are we seeing an improvement there?[1655.91]